Okay, this is the Conservation Commission's July seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four regular meeting. Called to order at seven oh five. Present today are Carol Jordan, Bob Shabbitt, Marilyn Schreiber, Jackie Kulig, Patty Phillips, Laura Rodriguez, and myself, Kathy Demers. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of June nineteenth.
I'll make some move.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Marilyn. Any discussion about the minutes? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? So, thanks, okay. Does not look like we have anybody here present to speak. Carol, you want to give us an update on finances?
Yep, um, we ended up spending one thousand two hundred and fifty-one dollars and twelve cents, so our unexpendable balance was two forty-eight eighty-eight for the fiscal year.
Okay, two forty-eight eighty-eight, Carol?
Yep.
Okay, the only reason I'm asking is you had sent me an email earlier when you bought the signs that said two forty-eight seventy.
Yeah, well, there was a, um, let's put it this way, there was a clerical error on the, on cutting the check or transposition which resulted in my getting eighteen cents less than but I wasn't about to rock the boat, so.
Okay.
So that's what happened.
No worries, just wanted to put it in the minutes correctly.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Um, just, I always like to just make a note under finance that our ARPA funds right now, we still have two thousand eight hundred forty-one and ninety-six cents left to spend on ARPA's twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
And we have to spend those by March thirty-first nineteen, excuse me, two thousand and twenty-six.
Um, another thing, I don't know maybe whether this is the time, um, do you want me to look to download forms from CLCC? And Kakawick produce for the new fiscal year, I can talk to Mike D'Amato about the Kakawick memberships and and CLCC, we usually give a hundred dollars to, last year, our share of the Kakawick was sixty dollars. That's um, at a slightly lower rate of, for the two commission price.
Yeah, um, and I think their membership dues are the same this year, what I had read, so, um, do we want to make a motion to expend funds to provide a membership to Connecticut?
CLCC, which is Connecticut Land Conservation Council and
Thank you.
Connecticut Association of Conservation and Inland Wetlands Commission, otherwise known as Kakawick.
I'll move.
Okay, Bob? Second? Marilyn? Okay, okay. All right, I'm gonna put Patty in there because I hoida. Okay, any more discussion on that, on those expenditures? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained? So moved, okay, great. All right, so, starting off our budget by spending a hundred and sixty bucks, thanks Carol. Okay.
And I'll talk about that.
Old business, uh, collaborative organizational news and communication, uh, just kind of a follow-up, the work that we've been doing with the library, uh, Norm's not here right now, but she had, and maybe Laura, you can give us an update on how the hike went on the twenty-ninth of June.
We had a lovely time, we just had one family, um, who had, uh, two children, um, but Nora read a delightful story to them and had props to go with it of parts of the different animals that were involved, um, in the story, and, and then we went for a hike and the two little guys were well ahead of us the whole time, like, there was no problem with them getting too tired. Um, but the family thoroughly enjoyed having a personal tour, you know, um, so it was unfortunate, it was, you know, it was, it was a cloudy, it was kind of an overcast morning, one of those where you might want to just kind of hunker in. You know, so that may have been part of why there, there weren't too many people, but the, the family that was there was, was very happy and the wife, um, and it turns out that she is the sister of a former student of Nora's. They figured that out on the hike, which was kind of cool.
Great, what trails did you do?
Oh, we did just the one loop. Taylor Pond, Taylor Pond, that's it.
Well, thank you again for, um, spending time to do that, you know, these are the things sometimes that make it a little challenging for the commission is, you know, having the time for people to get out to lead hikes and so on, so thank you for taking that time.
Well, that was, it was, it was a lot of fun, it was my pleasure.
Uh, then the Horizon Wings event, um, did anybody attend that? From the commission? No, um, I did get a text from Steve and he said they had fifty-six attendees, he said it was largest groups that he has seen since he started to work at the library. Um, he sent quite a few photos, I did take some of those photos and sent them on to all of you. So that was a very well-attended event, um, and, uh, he said basically, you know, if the Conservation Commission wants to partner with them again for an event, um, they would be really happy about that, so, and he said to thank us again for expending funds to pay for the program in total. Um, the library is also going to be having another program about the Connecticut Civilian Conservation Corps camps, the CCC camps, and that's a Saturday, July twentieth at eleven, um, so I'm just, uh, you know, getting that information out, I'll ask just again, support the library and because it has to do with conservation and environmental, um, issues, uh, you know, I'll ask Tish maybe to put out, um, something on our website about it, just to support them.
That's the Saturday, right?
Saturday, yeah.
Yeah, eleven o'clock. They, they have a speaker, if you want more information about it, you can go to the library's website and they have a flyer. Park and Rec Department, um, nothing, um, scheduled yet for a fall hike, that's something we can discuss perhaps at the next meeting and looks for some potential dates and maybe October, uh, when we could lead a hike on the Split Rock Trail or something off of Mason Road, and so keep in mind if you might want to lead the hike or uh, be part of that day, um, what dates you might be available. Connecticut Forests and Parks Association, uh, Claire Kane, um, is still working on uh, what they want to do for the reroute for the Blue, uh, Blue Blaze Trail, so she's gonna get back to us on that. Still hasn't made a determination if they want to use the Talmud Spur and/or the Split Rock Trail. Connecticut Association of Conservation and Inland Wetland Commissions, or KAKI WIC. Couple things here, as Carol noted, dues were due. The Habitat Newsletter is online at their website, their website is actually really nice, uh, they've updated it, it looks great, there's a lot of links to some really pertinent information about climate change and different issues that are going on, uh, environmental issues. So I'd encourage all of you to take a look at that when you have a chance, I'll send out a link again to their website. And they're also going to be having, uh, their annual conference in Bristol, that'll be Saturday, November sixteenth, they have usually some really, um, wonderful speakers that talk about issues pertinent to Conservation Commissions and Inland Wetland Commissions. Um, and as we've done in the past, the Conservation Commission can use our funds, uh, to pay for anybody's registration fee. So if you're interested, they haven't quite gotten all the information about the conference up yet on their website, they're just kind of a save the date uh, notice, but once that becomes available, I'll send it out to all of you, and if, if you'd like to register, you can be reimbursed by the commission. Unless, Carol, you, if there's time, I don't know if it's better for people to ask, you know, uh, if we have the finance department, just send in the registration, what, how would you like to handle that?
I think what we've done in the past is usually people have, have made a copy of their, of what their registration, whether it's by check or whatever, credit card or whatever, and we, then we just reimburse, I think that's simpler. It's not the kind of thing that involves tax, sales tax or any of that kind of stuff, so reimbursement works fine if that's all right for people involved.
All right, and, uh, support for farmland protection, um, I know that Jackie and Carol had said they would, um, start to look into some things regarding tax abatement, farm buildings, as well as right to farm ordinances. Like Jackie had, had to come back in there, so. Wait for her to get back in.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, hi Jackie.
Yeah, sorry, computer issues.
No, no worries, hey, we're, um, just coming up on, um, support for farmland protection. And, uh, wonder if you have any updates on some of the ordinances that you're gonna look into from Ashford.
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't have any updates, I was going to try to compile them and, and write up a proposal, but, um, have not had the opportunity, but well, keep trying to work on that.
Yeah, understand, this is a busy time for you, so. Okay, well, thanks for continuing to keep it on your list to do.
Yeah, no, no problem.
Um, I did ask Kara, our tax assessor, for a list of all of the landowners who are now using Public Act four ninety or PA four ninety, which is allowing them to have their land, whether it's farmland, forest, or open space, taxed at the use value rather than, you know, what the property would be, um, assessed for based on, like, its development potential. So she did send the list, and I did send that out to Carol and Jackie as a preliminary. It just gives us an idea of approximately how many people in town are landowners. Um, they may not all live in town, but folks that are, have applied to that program and that have some kind of a tax reduction because they have acreage in farmland, forest, and/or open space. And for forest land, you have to have at least twenty-five acres. And for open space in the town of Wellington, you have to have at least five acres to be able to apply for that. For farmland, uh, there's no acreage minimum, but, um, you have to show or demonstrate to some degree that you're using the land for some productive use, um, as farmland, you know, could be Christmas trees, could be hay, it could be crops, it could be, uh, producing honey. Um, more than just producing something for your own use. Uh, you don't have to have a certain, uh, farm income to be able to keep your property in, under that, uh, tax um, assessment, but, um, you kind of have to demonstrate to some degree that you are using the property for some kind of farmland use. And when Kara generated the list, and I'll send it out to everyone, um, it shows where the property is located, how many acres are either in farm, forest land, and/or open space, as well as the address of the landowner, so they may not live in town, um, but they own property in town. And what accounted was that right now there are eighty-two properties in the town of Wellington that have some designation as farmland, and it can run the gamut from, you know, three acres to a hundred and eighty acres, you know? So that's kind of interesting, um, maybe when Carol and Jackie have time, it would be interesting to kind of look that over and, and kind of get a sense of how many of these properties might actually be, you know, actively productive. So.
I'm working on a project for church, when I get that out from under that, maybe I can have a chance to look at, go, won't make any guarantees, not for the near future.
Yeah, well, it, that's okay, I mean, there's nothing, there's no rush on this, it's just kind of a starting point. Um, might give us some sense of how many people might potentially be able to, um, benefit from some of these other ordinances we're looking into, like the right to farm or getting some type of tax abatement for farm buildings, if they do have a farm building. You know, that would be something that the tax assessor's office might be able to help us kind of focus on, you know, if there is a building on the property that's being taxed, you know, even though, um, they have property under farmland, four ninety, so.
Yeah, once, once we get, get the, uh, identify the properties, we can check the property cards, they should show whether there are outbuildings, for example, outbuildings that might qualify for tax exemption, that sort of thing.
Right. Um, the other thing, as I just want to mention, is, um, actually, I can wait until we get down to talking about planning and zoning and, um, economic development, I'll, I'll wait on that. Under Properties Management, Beth Ruby, uh, Bob, I think you had, um, taken care of a tree on the Wygol property, on the Wygol Trail, I mean?
With the weather, I haven't been out there yet, tween rain that we're having right now, once the it's, um, I'll, I'll get down there and take that, take care of that.
Okay, thanks.
Not a, a big project, so.
Yeah, well, you know, again, if you, I'm not sure how large the tree is, it was reported by somebody who was walking on the trail a few weeks ago, so, um, and I'm sure people are getting around it, okay. Um, something, you know, it seems like we just have more and more trees down with some of the weather events we have, plus a lot of the ash trees dying, so. Um, Chris had taken the brush cutter out a couple of weeks ago and he used it on the Taylor Pond Trail to go around the field area, um, because the brush was kind of closing in on the trail. And he also, uh, treated some mugwort, which is an invasive plant that was along the access road, um, from the parking lot down to the trailhead for Taylor Pond, so he treated that with some roundup. Um, the other thing I just wanted to report is, um, over by the landing, where we had the timber harvest in sixteen, um, that Japanese steel grass, remember Bob, we were trying to treat that as well? That looks like it just is all over the landing now, I, it's just one of those invasive plants that is very challenging, so I don't know what really we can do in that area, you know?
Oh, it's, it's just not there, if you go in down, uh, eastern Connecticut, uh, we were hiking off of Route fourteen by the, I don't know if it's the Hop River in that area, and it's the whole trail is just loaded with that, so it's not it's, and I've seen it several other places where, uh, we've been hiking, so it's, uh, it's more or less established itself.
What does it look like?
Um, it's, it looks like a, like a thick, thicker grass, um, you know, it's probably about six to eight inches tall. Um, you can look it up online, Japanese stilt grass.
Kind of re, the wharf, uh, bamboo, insofar as
Yeah.
Ang and hold themselves, uh, and it's, uh, I, I sprayed it in the roadway one year and I, I sprayed it twice. And the following year, there was just as much of it, so the seeds winter and even though you kill it, uh, and there's no seeds for a year, there's just such a seed load that it just comes back with a vengeance, really.
And it doesn't seem to mind the shade either, it's, uh, not something that has to necessarily be in the sun to, to thrive, so. Um, you know, again-
It's actually quite pretty, I just brought it up on my phone, I can see how you could dismiss it, it's but, yeah, if it's doing what you guys are saying, even though it's pretty, really, we don't really need any of it, you don't need to, uh, bring it home and colonize it.
We need pandas.
I think we can pet our own deal with, with China.
I'll tell you, though, when you, when, when you look at all the pictures, you can see what a tight mat it can make on the ground.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh my gosh, yeah, it's, this is bad, this is bad news.
What about goats?
There you go, Patty.
Yeah, but you have to have the goats first.
Right, easier than pandas.
Yeah, that's an interesting thought, I mean, um, Jackie, do you know of anybody that has goats that could pen them up and let them-
Was, uh, one of the hipskis, I think Karen was, or did she pass away, one of the hipskis had goats up on Moose Meadow, on the upper part of Moose Meadow, um, I don't know if I, I don't know.
There was someone actually renting, uh, goats for that purpose, but I think they just moved out of Wellington, they were on Tinkerville.
Oh, bummer.
They were part of, called Goats on the Go. They will rent out their goats and, you know, bring them with the fencing and water supply and everything, and, um, you know, put them in the areas that you're looking to manage. I don't think, last time I looked there, she was like the only one in Connecticut doing it, but.
Where they moved?
Oh, yeah, New York State, I think.
Oh, too bad, I was gonna say, I was hoping somewhere close by.
The, it was the farm on Tinkerville Road, um, not too far from the Ashford line. So they always have their goats around there, but.
Oh. Ah, maybe we should use some funds to buy a few goats.
And a farmer to take care of them.
Yeah, or, or for each project for the kids, you know? So, well, if, if there's some way that, um, somebody wants to use the, um, the brush cutter, the which you can always use as like a string trimmer too, and, and go out there sometime and just weed whack some of it down before this year's crop goes to seed. Again, I, you know, it's, we have other invasives in the park, I mean, we're just doing our best to try to manage them, we're never gonna get rid of them.
One option for the landing area, I'm not sure if it's, um, would be doable, but, you know, putting down black silage tarp um, with weights on the edges, you know, just leave that down for a season. And that'll control what's there, and it, it won't get rid of the seed bank, but, um, it'll keep it from, you know, making more seed.
And where do you purchase things like the silage tarps?
Um, we've had it through Progressive Grower, which is a agricultural supply company, I'm not sure if there's places locally, um, but.
Do you think Agway would carry it, the Agway, and, um, it's near Manchester, yeah?
Some people use that kind of thing on their vegetable gardens, just, you know, like to plant through for, as a mulch too, so I would assume that if you get it somewhere like an Agway.
And it comes in large sheets, Jackie?
Yeah, we get it, uh, we've gotten it on a big roll before.
Yeah.
Um, there could also be some local, um, local farms with, you know, scraps from their silage pile, you know, we have gotten that in the past, a lot of times they have holes in them though, so it's not always the best option.
And how long do they last, do they last more than one season, do you just leave it down?
Yeah, yeah, as long as, you know, nothing pokes holes in it or anything, but the, it's not gonna break down for several years.
Okay.
Yeah.
Would anybody like to look into this further, maybe just, you know, do a little bit of investigation to see where it might be available, what it would cost, you know, how large the the tarps are, um, or even take-
How big of an area you're talking about with the landing?
Oh, yeah, yeah, um, I'm gonna say probably a hundred by a hundred fifty feet.
Oh, wow, okay, that's pretty big.
Yeah, you'd need, you'd need a, a bunch of people there to put that down and to secure it. That's not a one-person-wonder job, that's a, that's a group.
Yeah. Well, maybe we can think about it for the fall, you know, if we have a work event, we can put it down and then leave it through a couple of seasons and see what happens. Um, but if somebody-
Flowing might just be as effective if we're just trying to keep it from making more seed, but the existing seed bank is gonna, uh, you know, keep, i- if it's like some of the weeds that we deal with, they can sprout for ten seasons or, or even like be dormant in the soil for like a hundred years, so we don't really, what, what this, this one is like.
Yeah, I mean, I kind of like the idea of the tarps because, you know, it like, um, it'll smother it, it should kill the existing plants, and then it makes it difficult for the new seeds to sprout, if, you know, for a couple of seasons anyway. And it's an area of the park where it's really, most public don't go there, so it's not gonna be aesthetically an issue. You know, but if anybody is willing to maybe look into this for a next meeting and just come up with, you know, an idea of where we can purchase it, what the cost might be, um.
Jackie, what are you calling it again, what's it called?
Silage tarp is, you know, a lot of people use it-
Okay.
Silage, you know, corn silage piles, um, but yeah, a piece that big, you probably would need to get it from a commercial place like Progressive Grower is the one we get it from, they're up in Massachusetts. Um, we've gotten pieces that are a hundred by fifty, but I think they probably have a hundred by a hundred too.
All right. Anybody interested in doing a little research? Okay, we'll table that, um. Bet and Ruby Park, another thing I wanted to mention, you might, if anybody's gone, has gone by recently or even today, um, Public Works contacted me to say that a very large, uh, they said it was an ash tree had fallen, um, into one of the inlets for the river before it goes under the culvert through Moose Meadow, it was a large tree and it came down, and, uh, they, they were concerned that with any large storm, pieces of the tree could, uh, break off and then get stuck in the, um, the culvert, so, um, they went out, you know, I said, do whatever you have to do, so they went out and they cut up the tree and they took it out of there today. They had to take down a few smaller trees to get at it with the equipment. So, um, it's, if you're entering the park, if you're looking north up Moose Meadow Road where the guardrail is, it's just between the road and the river, you know, where the river starts to go underneath the, um, the road, so that's the area that they worked on today.
I didn't notice.
That tree was about three foot through.
Yeah, they said it was at least thirty inches in diameter, it was big, it was, it was rotten.
That was, I thought when I was down the river the other week.
Hmm, okay. Well, she came down. Um, Ken Fluid got back to me on the Boy Scout Bridge, so he, um, did a tally of all of the construction material we would need, and it looks like materials would cost between a thousand and twelve hundred dollars. So we could use our ARPA funds to, uh, purchase those materials and then work on repairing the railings on the bridge, uh, sometime this fall. I'd like to see if we can, if somebody wants to make a motion to expend the ARPA funds to purchase those materials, so we can just have that as an open um, possibility in the next few months to order things and then have them delivered to the park before we do the work.
Basically, just authorizing the reconstruction, uh, materials necessary to, uh, stabilize the, um, that bridge or whatever.
Yeah, it's, it's really to replace the railings, um, the, the decking and underneath the actual framework of the bridge is sound, but the railings are rotten and-
Basically, the superstructure of the bridge.
Um.
Some of it, well, whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll make a motion that, uh, we planned on, you plan on using, authorize you using ARPA funds as necessary for, for repairs to the, um, the bridge over the, by the Beaver Pond, well, whatever, by the pond.
Okay.
The Boy Scout Bridge.
Okay. Okay, do I hear a second?
Sure.
Okay, Bob, thank you. Okay, um, any more discuss, any more discussion about using ARPA funds for the bridge? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Okay, thanks. Okay. Poor Laura, she keeps coming in and out. Hi Laura. Laura, are you having trouble staying connected? Laura, are you having trouble staying connected?
No, she's over there now.
Oops.
She must, cause she keeps.
Yeah, it, it kicked me out and we didn't have wifi and so I went onto my phone, so I was just listening with my phone and I just got wifi back, so I just switched back to my laptop, so. Hopefully I won't be jumping around anymore here.
This is technology wonderful.
Well, it's nice to have the cellular, right? When you lose your wifi, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, and then let's see. Knowlton Preserve, uh, we're still looking for a steward for the Knowlton Trail. If you know of anybody interested in uh, volunteering just to walk the trail once a month and, you know, report any, uh, issues on the trail. Uh, we'd also probably wanna re-blaze the Knowlton Trail. The paint markings getting pretty faint. So that, if anybody's interested in doing that summer, um, you know, I have the paint available and you can just contact me and, and get the paint and some brushes and a scraper to you. Um, it's a nice two-person job. You know, one person kinda scrapes the bark a little bit over the old paint and then the second person just comes along and puts the paint back on it. The Knowlton Trail is two colors. It's got blue and I believe white. Um, you could double check that by looking at the map, but, um, that is a, you know, that's an easy job to do through the summer. It's kind of fun if anybody wants to do it. Just let me know. Uh, trail signs, um, so Carol had ordered them and she put them in the town office building. I picked them up. I'm meeting with Troy tomorrow on Mason Road and we're gonna determine where they're gonna be placed um, across where the trails are crossing. So that'll get done when Public Works has some time. I'll give him the signs tomorrow. Town development. Uh, one thing I wanted to mention is the Economic Development Commission. Uh, maybe we talked a little bit about this at last meeting. They've hired a consultant. His name is Ernie, uh, Blindberger. His company is called Strategy Five. And he's been asked to develop a strategic economic development plan uh, for the town of Wellington. So he's been talking to different people in town on commissions, residents, uh, other stakeholders and, um, getting an idea of what some, you know, what the past history has been for the town, what are the resources in town? What kind of things make sense for the town? And they're planning an outreach event on September seventh. It's a Saturday. It'll be at one o'clock at the library. And it's an opportunity for residents to come and, um, talk about what they would like to see happening in the town in terms of uh, commercial development, natural resource protection. If any of you saw the flyer that was in the Wellington Wire, they had a flyer in there that talked about the open house. They're gonna discuss things like, um, growing things, agriculture, selling things, retail services, tourism, hospitality, transportation, energy and sustainability. So it'll be roundtable discussions, so probably ask people, you know, to kind of break up into groups depending on what issues might be important to you. Um, but I would really encourage us to try to get to that open house. There's gonna be another one later in the fall, but it's a really great opportunity to talk about some of the issues and make sure that both sides of the conversation are there, you know, not only development, but also natural resource protection. Um, and how maybe some of, you know, what we have for resources in town, natural resources are important to the economy of the town. You know, what does that bring to the town? So, I know that, um, Jackie has a, uh, meeting scheduled with Ernie as well, kinda to discuss things from the agricultural side, so really glad to see that, you know, they're reaching out to people in all the different sectors.
Yeah, Christine, I are meeting with him on, uh, Monday, Monday afternoon.
Great, great. What's the focus, um, Bob? Is it from the historical society focus or just in general?
Interested in, uh, uh, historical, uh, preservation um, from planning and zoning, I, I've been thinking about businesses in town and, uh, bring them an opportunity to have an industrial park. And so we don't get this situation where, you know, we allow home businesses in, the whole town is R eighty. And, you know, if, uh, a business is successful, uh, neighbors may find themselves next to something that looks like a commercial property. You know, if you don't live next door to it, you don't mind it, but, uh, you know, you know, it comes with, uh, kinda headaches because the town doesn't wanna spend money on anything, let alone buy land that they could develop as an industrial park. But a park in itself would offer revenue to the town. So this catch twenty-two, sometimes you may not wanna play the game, but play the game comes exactly in your favor. So there, there's, there's a lot to talk about and of course, I'm, I'm wearing too many hats over the years. So I, I have a number of, uh, areas, uh, uh, I wanna, you know, engage in conversation.
That's great. So, you know, again, for other folks, a, a great opportunity would be to try to put, you know, this on your calendar for September seventh. And, um, you know, go to the Wellington Public Library and we don't necessarily have to participate and say a lot. Um, you might be there just to listen, see what the tenor is from other people in town. Um, get a sense of where this is going. I mean, the more, the more people get involved in this, the more it will represent all of Wellington and not just certain people in town who might wanna see certain types of development and so on, so. Um, you know, I hope you'll make, um, some time to try to get to that. And if not that one, there'll be another one later in the fall.
Yeah, if I might, Kathy, just expound on that a little bit. I think this opportunity for everyone in town to partake similarly like we did with our first plan of conservation and development. When we, groups around town getting together, collecting individuals, I, which were then brought to the, uh, to the main group of eight that was developing the plan of conservation and development. And it seemed to work out quite well in the towns.
Yeah, yeah, we did the study circles. I don't know if people remembered that. That was like twenty years ago, but that was, that was great. That, a lot of people participated in town and it really helped to develop, you know, a plan of conservation that was really balanced um, and spoke to what the, the needs and wants of residents were. Um, and this is another opportunity, um, to really, you know, and think outside the box too, be creative. Um, you know, we don't have to just put a bullseye on, you know, having one big development, you know, to increase the tax base. It can be lots of things. And, um, you know, I'm hoping, and I was, I was very encouraged when I spoke to Ernie, cause I did talk to him for quite a while on the phone, um, about some of the issues from the conservation side. And I was very, um, and heartened to see that he has a lot of interest in blending, um, natural resource conservation, open space agriculture, um, into an economic development plan. It's not just all about growth and development, so, um, that was very heartening. Okay, moving on. Um, oh, Bob, is there anything you wanna report from planning and zoning that might relate to conservation? Anything going on there?
Uh, yeah, I guess a, a few good things in town. Uh, the state up there on, uh, water, uh, wastewater, so FedEx, uh, before the, uh, and they're, uh, increasing the, uh, level for their wastewater. I don't know, a couple of months it should be.
Bob, you're breaking up. I'm, I'm having trouble hearing you. Is anybody else?
Me too.
Yeah.
Me too.
You, do you wanna, Bob, just get rid of your, um, video maybe and just talk? Maybe that would help.
Will.
How's that?
Oh, is that better?
Yes, so far.
Yep.
Okay, okay. It's just not enough bandwidth on my phone. Uh, so, um, the state mandated, uh, better, uh, water quality and that's both on, uh, drinking water and, uh, wastewater treatment. So FedEx is, uh, upgrading their wa- wastewater, uh, treatment. Uh, and it's interesting, the, the two units that they're using are, uh, two semis that are gonna be parked or dropped permanently on site. And if there's ever a problem, they just swap uni- swap trailers out, uh, they on top of that. Uh, then in South Wellington, the, uh, everyone's familiar where uh, Jerry's Tavern was. It used to be Hall's Barn way back in the day. Uh, they're, uh.
Nope. Nope.
It's across from, um, the fishing game, Bob?
So it's that barn, it looks, it's a, it's an old barn complex that's been read, re, uh, done several times. So the group is going to, it's, it's, uh, gonna be rehabbed into both, uh, apartments and, uh, commercial. And it's sort of unique because this is first foray into redevelopment in our district zones. And that's Wellington. The, the zone there has different regulations than the rest of town. And, uh, so they're gonna start with four, uh, four, on, four apartments in the west, uh, bay, that complex. And once that's done, they're gonna move into the bay, one that, the part that's closest to, uh, Route thirty-two. And then the third one is still in the future, but that's gonna be the third, uh, project. And that may be just commercial or it may be commercial slash, uh, residential.
Where exactly is this, Bob? Is it, uh, Connor Depot or?
No, it's, you know where Hall's Barn is, where Jerry's Tavern used to be?
I don't know. I, no, don't know Jerry's Tavern at all. Fishing game club and the, um.
You're coming out of, coming out of South Wellington, Carol.
Yeah.
Right, when you go past the mill and their retaining wall, off to the left-hand side, there's a barn complex.
Uh, uh, as you're going north, is it on the right?
On the left.
Well, there used to be the barn, the barn restaurant that, that burned. That area, is that where it is?
It's gotta be.
Yeah, it had been rebuilt.
Yeah, right. There was, cause there were, there was a barn that was converted into a restaurant and then that burned, right?
This, the building is still there, but it's, it, it's not in great condition.
Well, it needs a new.
Needs a new roof.
Okay, so it's, so it's just south of, of, uh, where Fisher Hill Road comes out.
Yeah.
Across the street. Yeah.
Yeah.
Just about.
If anybody's interested too, you can watch the YouTube video of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting from last night. It was, it was interesting. Um, there were photos and, um, schematics of what the plan is. It's very, i- it's interesting.
Okay.
If there's any questions, there's no public hearing for this, with this four units. And that's because it's in the village district. Village district until, if you're u- if you're reusing a building, you don't have to have a public hearing or you don't have to get a special permit until it goes to five units or more. So five units will kick in when they do the second phase. Reason that is why everything's different down there. When it was developed and set aside like that, Wellington has never had an opportunity to have a main street and the surrounding area that other towns do. South Wellington is the best opportunity that Wellington has to have a main street. So in South Wellington, you can have a bed and breakfast. You can't have a bed and bre- breast of Wellington. So it's, it's set up to encourage redevelopment and reuse in multiple ways.
That's great. Yeah. I'm curious, Bob, because I, I don't know a lot about what's been done about affordable housing in town. Um, could the area, could this area potentially host some affordable housing as well?
Well, you know, uh, again, thi- this isn't, this is a topic that is, we could talk about for two or three. One of the, that you have to realize about affordable housing is right now with the cost of materials, it's all possible to build a quote-unquote affordable unit. Uh, when, if you, if, if anybody shops at Big Y, you'll notice that they started pouring foundations for that development. And teen development. When they came into Taland and Taland, just like Wellington, like all, uh, small towns, is interested in having affordable housing. Santini paid the town of Taland, I believe, don't quote me, in the vicinity of two million dollars for their, uh, affordable housing fund, so they wouldn't have to build any affordable housing. That they're talking about in, in the old barn, they're talking, uh, high-end, they're talking about high-end finishes, planked floors, uh, marble, uh, countertop. Where the money is and they have to do that because it's costing so much right now. I mean, a two costs about nine bucks.
No, I was just wondering how this might dovetail, um, in the village district about reusing buildings and so on, which maybe, I don't know if it's less costly to, uh, reuse, redevelop rather than start from scratch, so.
That's a conversation we can have with them when they get into the second and third, uh, phase. When they get into the second and third phase, that's going to kick in for the fifth unit. It's going to open it up for a public hearing, a special permit.
Yeah.
Your time when the town can bring that forward. You know, in a small u- a small build-out like that, maybe we can get one affordable housing unit out of it. I'm not, um, so it, you know, to be, but the good point is that that building is going to be rehabbed, to be used again. Uh, the, the town of Wellington, uh, tax law.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's, that's good. And I know that this is going beyond what, you know, we're talking about conservation issues, um, so I won't belabor that, so, but thank you for that update. Any other, um, news that people have about any town development pertinent to conservation? Okay. Uh, let's see, Regional Pollinator Pathway Initiative. Um, all I have to say is, um, I, you know, I stopped at Fenton Ruby today and the garden looks really good. The pollinator garden, it was just really buzzing with lots of bumblebees, um, honeybees, butterflies, uh, hummingbird moths. It was so cool. Um, if you have a chance to go and see it right now, there's a lot of flowers that are attracting pollinators, so. Uh, let's see, open space opportunities, so seven acre parcel on Burma Road, um, the Peddix property. seven-acre parcel on Burma Road, um, the Peddix property. So, one of the big issues with this property that has been kind of stopping forward motion has been, how are we going to remove the camp? I think that everybody, you know, is in an agreement that the parcel itself would be a nice addition to the park, but we have to have a plan to remove that camp before we can ask the town to commit to purchasing the property. And we've looked at the issue of access using the discontinued portion of Lustig Road. Um, and the town of Ashford had determined that they had discontinued it so that they did not have jurisdiction over it. And so the attorney basically had said, you need to work with the landowners that are along that portion of Lustig Road and get permission, and one of the three landowners along the road did not want to provide, um, did not want to work with the town to do that. So Mike talked to the attorney again, and, um, I did a little bit of title research to look at the Peddix property and the properties along Lustig Road, and what I found out was originally back in the thirties, they were all one parcel. So they were subdivided, and at the time, the gentleman that owned them in the thirties kept the seven-acre parcel that's now the Peddix property in Wellington, and he sold the portion that was in Ashford. So the question now becomes, because they were all one parcel at a, at a one point in time after the road was discontinued, whether or not the Peddix property has the same right of access as the other parcels along Lustig Road. So the only way we can determine this is if we ask the attorneys to start doing a formal title search and come up with a legal opinion on this. Um, so that's, that's number one. So if we wanted, we really wanna try to use Lustig Road to get at that camp, we're gonna have to get a legal opinion on this that we can present to the town of Ashford and the residents that live on that road. The alternatives to doing, using Lustig Road would be to use Burma Road. And as we talked about before, when Public Works Department, um, Troy and I walked the road several times, and it was gonna cost a lot of money to upgrade the road so that they could bring the town's equipment, all of the town's equipment that we would need, up that road. They can get the excavator up there without improving the road, but they can't get the dump truck up there. There's just too much of a risk that you're gonna break a two-hundred-thousand-dollar truck.
Right.
So, um, the alternative to that, we came up with some other ideas. One is that Troy is gonna look into renting a type of equipment, uh, it's, it's on tracks like an excavator. It has tracks instead of tires that could navigate and has a dump body so that they would rent it for a week and go up the road, um, they could take the excavator up, uh, break the camp up, and then put this in the dump body of this particular type of vehicle, and then drive it down and put, put it in the materials in a dumpster at the end of Burma Road. So he's gonna look into the cost of that. And the other thing we talked about was whether a piece of logging equipment, like a forwarder, could get up the road and bring some of the materials down from the camp that the excavator would break up. So I asked Austin Harmon from Hall to walk the property, to walk Burma Road and the property with Troy. So we went up there and he looked at it and he said, um, he thought that, uh, he could talk to some people that do logging and find out what it would cost to get a forwarder, you know, to use a forwarder, and he did get a quote from a logging company that said they'd charge two-hundred dollars an hour. It would, they anticipated it would be maybe five hours of work, so that would be a thousand dollars, and it would be five-hundred dollars to move the forwarder, um, you know, to move it over to Burma Road, because they'd have to trailer it in. So potentially for fifteen-hundred dollars, um, we could remove the camp material. So we're gonna look at that in terms of, you know, what it would cost for Troy to rent something versus a logging company. So we have those as options.
Kathy, um, I have a question. It, it does every, does the whole, the whole, uh, all of the materials in the structure have to be taken out, or could some of them just go into the basement? There is a, a basement, isn't there?
Yes, there, there is a foundation there. It's an old rock foundation. Um, you know, it's probably better to remove the materials because some of them are old. They might have some, you know, toxic materials. It's old asphalt sing- shingles and, um, it would be better if we could just remove them rather than just put them in there, and then we would fill the foundation with some gravel, which, you know, they can bring up with the excavator, so.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't, I haven't looked at it that closely, um, just to, might make sense to see if there, you know, if we could minimize how much has to be, has to, or, or, you know, other ways of dealing with it, uh.
Well, the, you're gonna have to bring some material out of there, no matter what you do, so you need a vehicle to do that, and the town does not have an appropriate vehicle. They have a, they have the equipment to break up the camp and to pick it up literally and put it into something, but we don't have a, we don't have a vehicle to drive it down to a dumpster. And that's the issue, uh. But, but there's alternatives, like I said, um, looking into renting a type of vehicle that the town could rent for a week uh, to do the work, or using the logging company's forwarder to do the work.
Um, Kathy, what, what section of, of, how much of Burma, of Burma Road would you be talking about having to bring stuff in? Uh, they've mentioned the possibility of, of checking to see if we could come in Amadon, where Amadon conducts, um.
Yeah, I've, you know, we've walked that as well. That's even narrower, and, okay. Yeah, that we walked.
It's somewhat better condition than, but the, the lower, the lower, if we have to come all the way in from what section of Burma, where would we be talking about coming through, the section that's blocked off now?
Yeah, from where, from the rocks to the camp is a half a mile. So, I mean, basically, yeah, go ahead, Marilyn, question?
Um, do you know what the, uh, neighborhood thinks about this idea of, I'm, I mean, just, uh, to me, I think you always have to make sure that the neighbors understand what's gonna happen, because that whole process that you've mentioned with the, um, big equipment could really, um, I'm ju- I'm just wondering i- if the, the neighborhood is going to be happy with the noise and um, the disruption of what they're used to, because that place is pretty quiet.
Yeah.
I mean, I've only been there once, but it's like a, not much goes, it's like, it's like time stood still on that road, or at least to me, it seemed that way. And I would just hope that there aren't residents that will get their dander up over, over all of them, all of what would be happening.
Well, if it came in on Lustig Road, there's only two residents there, and the residents that live there are, are there, they're open to this idea. It was the third,
Oh, good.
It was the third landowner that's closest to the Peddix property that lives in South Carolina that was not interested in signing a right-of-way agreement. That would have been the easiest thing to do, but because we don't have the agreement of all three landowners, we can't use that route. So as far as Lustig Road is go- it goes right now, we are gonna wanna look into whether or not the Peddix property has the right of access because it was formerly part of a larger parcel that got subdivided, so that would be a legal determination. Um, and so that's the other thing. But I, what I'd like to say is, at the moment, we at least have some option for removing that camp, and that's been the barrier to moving forward to talking to Mrs. Peddix and, and saying, you know, this is what we'd like to offer you, this is what it's gonna cost us, um, to remove the camp, you know.
So she's more agreeable? The conversations is still open with her? I, I hadn't heard that, that, because everything we're doing is leading up to continuing our conversation with her.
Right.
And, and actually, she, um, we are her best bet for, uh, uh, for getting rid of that property, because, um, it, all reasons it's difficult for us would be even, but just as difficult for anybody else looking to purchase the property. And, um, so, you know, that, even though, you know, we're looking for a, a reasonable product, she, she also will, we are willing to, what, but she wants something, a section named after her husband and things like that, so there, there are things that, that we can offer that a, a, an individual.
She's committing a little more than she has in the past, than.
Oh, she, she's always been willing, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, you know, she really wants to get rid of the property and, and work for her best option. That always happened because, because of things such as no longer having electricity go in there and that kind of thing. And the, all, all the road i- issues, the same issues we're having, they, uh, would be even more of an issue for somebody who would want to put an elec- uh, power line and that kind of thing, if they wanted to, to build on the property. So, yeah, we're her best option.
And she agrees. Good.
Yeah, she's, she's been very, um.
She just wants to get, he wants to.
She wants to move on. She wants to move on.
Move on. She really does, and, uh.
Good. Okay, good.
So, so we had the appraisal done last year in August. Um, the appraisal came out to be, you know, they said that they felt that the property was worth thirty-five thousand dollars.
I remember that, yeah.
Okay, so that's what the appraisal says. And, you know, basically, we know we're gonna have some additional expenses, and the question is, what type of offer would we like to make to her, um, for the property, given that we know we're gonna spend probably six thousand dollars on legal fees by the time we do the title search, purchase and sales agreement, the closing, the title insurance? And then the second thing is, you know, removing the camp. And, you know, what I've estimated, like on the high end, because even, um, even if we rent a vehicle to take the materials out, we still have to rent a dumpster. And Troy had already come up with a figure of forty-six hundred dollars to rent the dumpster for the week. Um, so, you know, that, then you'd have addition of renting some kind of vehicle. Now, I came up with a rough figure of like seven thousand dollars to remove the camp, six thousand dollars for legal fees, so that would be thirteen thousand dollars just there. What I'd like to, this is my proposal to you, because I'd like to kind of, now that we have, we can say with certainty that we have some way of removing that camp. We'll either use Lustig if, from a legal, you know, if we come up with the legal advantage of being able to do that, or if we cannot do that, then we will use Burma Road, either rent a vehicle or will hire a logging company to take the materials out. And, um, so we have a plan of being able to remove the camp. We certainly could go forward to the Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen, and say, we'd like to ask the town to consider going to town meeting to expend open space funds to purchase the property, pay for legal fees, and camp removal, you know, and come up with some kind of an amount, you know, using open space money up to, because we've done that in the past. We don't know exactly what the.
Talking about, uh, yeah, directly out of the open space fund or from the Town's Reserve Fund, or a combination thereof?
Well, it, you know, Board of Finance could make that determination, but, um, we have adequate open space funds. I don't, I'm not sure why we wouldn't wanna use those, but.
The other, um, the other question, Kathy, is in negotiating with her, uh, perhaps, even though we have a, an appraisal, we might be able to, um, negotiate a, a lower price, given the ex- the extra costs that are involved for us, and because we're, because she doesn't have a lot of options, we might be able to negotiate the price some downward somewhat to offset, uh, part of the costs of, of, um, you know, making it the property accessible for us.
Mm-hmm. So. It, yeah, go ahead, Laura.
So with, if, if the, if we're not able to come in from Ashford, so we have to rent something or do, you know, you know, option B or C, have you figured out how much that, like, just an estimate of how much that would cost or not?
Yeah, I mean, if, if we came in from Lustig, it would just be a matter of renting the dumpster for forty-six hundred. If we come in from Burma, we're going to have the cost of either the logging, uh, company, or we're going to rent a vehicle that plant, um, Public Works would use for the week. Um, so that's, Troy is gonna come up with that figure in terms of that rental cost. Um, so we have an idea compared to the logging company. Um, I think that Troy would really prefer to rent something. Um, that way he can control the schedule better, um. And also, he said if they rent it for a week, they may be able to use it for some other projects in town. So, you know, they might share the cost of renting it from Public Works Department, um, but he's gonna come up with that figure.
Okay, so the Lust- Lustig Road, that's the Ashford, that's.
Yeah, Ashford.
So it's, so it's, it's the uh, dumpster, forty-five hundred or so, plus the six thousand dollars in legal fees?
Right, the legal, the legal fees are gonna be there no matter what we do. We have to have.
That's what I was going to ask. Do you need to do the legal fees if you decide not to do the Ashford, if you just come in from Burma? But you will still need to do.
Yeah, you have to put together a purchase and sales. I think last time that cost us about sixteen or eighteen hundred dollars, and that was several years ago. So the hourly costs are probably higher. Per- purchase and sales, pretty boilerplate, but, you know, the attorneys pay a, charge a lot of money. And then they have to do the title search, and part of that title search might be a little bit more involved, because we're gonna want them to go back to the thirties, um, rather than, you know, just like forty years back, for, often with title searches are. Um, so that's gonna take more time, but, you know, I'm doing some of the preliminary legwork. I have, I'm listing out all of the volume and pages from the Ashford side, from the Wellington side, so we'll have some preliminary title search, research to give them um, and information about things like that there were uh, electric lines that came in from Ashford all the way down to the Peddix property, which show up on the survey that, that was done in nineteen ninety. They show the poll numbers, so at that time, there were still polls there with lines. Um, you know, we're, we're documenting that this was the access for this property over time. Even though the town of Ashford, um, had supposedly discontinued it back in nineteen twenty-nine, um, it, it, they may have done some, um, maintenance over time. They may not have plowed it in the winter, but they kept it open enough, maybe for the lines, you know, the electric company to be able to get in there. So.
Kathy, do you have any idea why the guy in South Carolina cares so much about that? You would think it, we, he wouldn't have, but it isn't gonna affect him directly or just a nostalgia or something. I don't know.
I think it's a personality thing, Carol, when I spoke to him. I don't wanna, you know, say too much online, but, yeah.
Is it property or, or a house too, or is it just land?
No, it's, it's just land, but there is an old foundation on the property that was burned, and the story goes that probably sometime like in the fifties or sixties, the gentleman that lived on the property in a house, um, killed his wife and daughter and burned the house.
Oof.
Yeah, so there's an old foundation with a chimney on that property, um.
Wow. You'd think that would, people would wanna get rid of that. That's like.
Is that the chimney right at the curve when you're making your way up?
That's a terrible story. Oh, my goodness.
That's the story that I got from the.
There's a lot of bad stuff associated with this property. We're sure we wanna buy this.
Oh, no.
We'll have a haunted woods.
It's not with the Peddix.
Yeah, it's a beautiful piece of property. It's a spectacular piece of property.
And, you know, and then the other story, the other story that I got from the Lustig landowner that lives there now, because she's a, she's adjacent to the gentleman in South Carolina. She said at one point, he wanted to develop that property, to put a house on it, and that he was not, uh, was not approved by Planning and Zoning in Ashford because there was some issue with a vernal pool. This is what she said. I don't know all the details, but he may just, you know, be upset about whatever.
All right, yeah, I was just, I was just curious, because, uh, being absentee, why, you know, what, uh, yeah.
Yeah, and, and the property is actually, he put it in his children's name, so the deeds are in his children's three names, but he is the only contact we have on the tax assessor's record. But he is the only contact we have on the tax assessor's record, so you have to go through him. He's the gatekeeper. So, yeah, so anyway, yeah.
Might be able to find a, a, one, one of the family members if, if any of them.
Yeah, but I don't wanna start doing.
It may not look family on that.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
But it, it does seem as if the people associated with it, there's a lot of uh, not so, not so good stories associated with. Various people have, have owned this property.
Yeah. So, I mean, that's the story. Um, so, you know, what I'd like to propose, and we don't have to do it tonight, but I'd like to think about at least. Um, trying to come to a decision by August about what we might want to at least start the negotiation with, you know. I'll just throw a, just for an idea, like, you know, say to Mrs. Peddix, would you be willing to accept twenty five thousand dollars for the property? Um, and, and then give her all the background information. This is what the appraisal said. And this is how much money the town would have to put into taking that camp out, legal fees. Um, this is what we think we can afford to pay for the property. Um, and at least start talking to her about the price, so we can see if she's willing. Um, to at least start there, or she might have, she might come back with some other offer.
I think. Approach that, yeah. I think it's a good first step and a, a good path to think about.
It doesn't hurt to talk with her.
I mean, is that a reasonable place to start? Do people think we should start lower? I mean, that's ten thousand dollars less than the appraised price. I think that's a good. We're gonna have to, you know, spend another thirteen thousand dollars on this project.
Think the other piece is the appraisal is a year old. And prices have only gone up.
Yeah.
So I think that's a good place to start.
Although, the, the other, the other side of that is that it's, it's, it's really because of the access issues. It's really, you know, if people had to choose between this property and a similar property somewhere else, where there's easier access, that, so there, there are, you know. It's a, it's unusual in that way, that it's not the most attractive property because of the access issues.
So Kathy, you and I and Dave walked there that one day that we went. Does that mean that, 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 that when you actually get to the, the pool? That all of that area getting to that will have to also be graded by the fellow from the town, from the town. That's gonna rent that big truck? Well, we need to come all the way down to there to improve that road for people to actually go to the pond to see it?
No, I, we don't have to improve the road. I mean, it's a walking path now.
Okay.
Stones all the way to the camp.
That'll, that'll suffice. That, that road that you and Dave and I walked on will suffice, and it doesn't need to have a lot of uh, expenditures on it.
With a special truck.
Right.
Kathy, another question, one, one of the, the other things we've talked about, and the, is the engineer's report. That suggests that we, we really need to, to get rid of a lot of the trees on the dam, or the dam. Would we want to do that at the same time we're having equipment in there to demolish the structure?
Yeah, and, and Troy did say that that would be another thing that they would do while they're up there with the excavator. Um, you know, they can go in there, they can cut the trees that they need to cut, and if they need to move anything, they can move it with the excavator.
Would, would we wanna thin out any of the, of the pine that has grown up there that, that makes it difficult to get from the road uh, down to the. Um, the pond that's created by the dam? Cause it's pretty overgrown.
Yeah, I mean, he can bring, um. He's got a machine that he can bring up there like with a, um, a rotary head to cut the brush like he did in the fields. Um, around Fenton Ruby, you know, how they cut down all of the invasive plants around the hayfields. So, the town does have some equipment that can be used in there, or he can bring a, you know, hand, they can use a brush cutter to cut things down. And, you know, some chainsaws, cause he knows, you know, Troy's very willing to have Public Works do that project. He's. He's definitely supportive of this.
Yeah, well, that's, I was just thinking that, that as long as we're gonna have to get in there to do the clearing of the building, we might as well take care of the work that's needed on the dam at the same time.
Right, and that's kind of why you're looking at a week's worth of work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One more question Kathy, this has to do with liability. What are, um, has anybody talked about the liability of the fact that this will be, there's an open pond there? And there will never be anybody there guarding it or lifeguarding it or anything? Is there any? Has that, uh, the issue of liability come up with the town or at all?
Um, well, Ken, you know, again, I think we've raised this question ourselves. Um.
Right.
There, there's times when there's nobody else at Taylor Pond. I mean, I was there today, nobody around for hours, so.
But don't worry about it.
I, you know, again, it could be a question we could ask the attorneys, um, if there's something else we have to do to protect. The town, you know, do we have to post the things, a sign, um, that says, you know, do not go on the ice, do not swim, you know.
Which we have that, right, at the kiosk at Fenton Ruby.
But, you know, would we need to put something additional up by the pond there? Um, you know, those are good questions. Um, but I, I don't think that's gonna stop progress on this.
No, 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 I, I would hope that it wanted, I just wanted to raise it as a, um, I'm just trying to think of the. The angles that it's easy to, e- easy to forget about, but in this litigious world that we live in, you kinda have to at least. Run it by a couple of people and then decide if it's, if, uh, how, how, if it's warranted to go forward with making sure. That you don't have somebody that's gonna sue you because. They fell in the pond, or I don't know, whatever. I, I, I just, I don't think we have to worry about it too much, but I think we should at least think about it a little bit, that's all.
Yeah, but you know, we could always talk to land trusts and stuff that have ponds and such on their properties and how they. You know, you can't put fencing, you know, i- if you, if you're, if you have a residence and you have a pool, you have to secure it. You know, that's a law. But if you own a pond, I don't think you have to put a fence around it.
Right.
Um, that's kinda different than a pool, than a structure, but. Um, but we can certainly ask the attorney, you know, that would be another question that they can into and give some guidance.
Yeah, they, they would probably be familiar with the issues involved in that.
Right.
Yeah. So.
We're gonna be dealing with somebody from Halloran and Sage, and they're, they are municipal and land use a- attorneys, so they're familiar with the law.
Right.
And, um, that good, my, a segue, good segue, Carol, um. So Ken Slater is the Land Use Offices Attorney that they use from Halloran and Sage. For any issues for planning and zoning in the wetlands. And he is also the attorney that serves that capacity in Ashford. So he's familiar, you know, with their uh, regulations, I mean, all that kinda stuff, so, um. You know, I'm not sure that he would be the person from Halloran and Sage that would do the title search and work with us on the purchase and sales. We can ask those questions, but. Um, it would definitely be Halloran and Sage that we're working with. Yes.
Better than the last time go around. We found out the town attorney with, uh, they had moved the town attorneys, they were not a firm that was specific to municipal law. And land use issues, and, but they had been with a firm that had a couple of municipal lawyers on their staff, and then they changed firms. And went to look them up, and they specialized in labor law. That's when we found out that the town's attorney, that's a labor, primary uh, attorney was a labor lawyer. And, um, and it turned out that this, the guy we would be dealing with. Uh, specializes in labor law as it applies to restaurant, the restaurant industry. So I asked him if they had any municipal lawyers on their staff, and he said, no, and I said, well, that's not exactly what we were, we're looking for, and the next thing we know, we were like. We were working through uh, land use stuff and, and ended up with Halloran and Sage, fortunately, because. Uh, the uh, attorney that was first proposed was not suitable to what we were looking for.
Buyer beware.
As he is, as he himself, uh, confessed, so. That worked out, and we, and we were very pleased with, I think, with the services we got from, through that, through Halloran and Sage, they were a good, they were a good firm.
Yeah. And, you know, Mike, uh, Damato, who's been helping on looking at some of these issues with the uh, access on Lustig Road, you know, he works a lot with Ken Slater, so. You know, we may end up just kinda using Ken because he's been familiar with this issue, so.
Absolutely.
So, as far as, I mean, we need money before we can hire the attorney, so we'd have to get permission from uh, Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen. Either to use some reserve funds, um, or bring it to a town meeting to use open space funds, so. But I think we need to, you know, kinda have a firm idea of what this would cost, so once we know. What the potential cost for renting something for, uh, Public Works renting something. And, um, also what Mrs. Peddix is willing to accept, um, for a purchase price. Um, once we have that information, we can move it forward. So, would you, and we can take a vote on this, or you can just give me a general consensus? Would you like me to start asking Mrs. Peddix, kinda start with a net working number of twenty five thousand as, you know, an offer price and see what happens? Um, do you wanna think about it some more? You know, it's, it's up to this commission, so.
Yes and no. I mean, we don't have the right to sell property, uh, to acquire property on behalf of the town, that's. You know, so, but we can, you know, certainly, we're the ones that are, that are kinda spearheading this, so.
Yeah, um, we don't have to like, um, check higher up on the food chain in town to the Board of Selectmen or anything, just, you know. I mean, I, this is something I've never dealt with before, and, um, do they know, do they have any idea that, that we, we will be coming to them? With this idea? Do they know about this idea? Yeah, they do, okay.
First Selectman's office, he has a wall, and he has listed the various commissions and what, and what items. Uh, are coming up related to the commission. So I, I guarantee you that Peter has something on the wall that, that refers to the Peddix property, right Kathy?
Well, yes, and then remember, we did go before the Board of Finance to get money to do the appraisal.
That's right.
They know, you know, we talked.
They know it's in the works. They know it's in the works.
Yeah.
And the only, but, but no, we can't, we can't say, okay, well, we'll sign a contract and, and, you don't, no, you know, it has to go through. The town that's acquiring the property and therefore the, the signatories would be the, the powers that be.
Right, so, so that they need to be part of it, because it's in their town and they're in charge of things that happen in town. The Board of Selectmen, they, there's no way you can do this without having them on board. It would be, it would be a lot, it would be ridiculous to do it that way.
And you can't, you can't get the funding without going through Board of Finance.
That's right.
About meeting prop, uh, proposals as necessary, so, you know, it's, um.
And, and a purchase and sales agreement could be based upon this, uh, going to town meeting, so you, you know, you. Contingent upon, you know, the town approving expending money to the property, so, you know.
Can we wait till next month to vote? Cause Troy still has information to give us. He hasn't gotten it all, right?
True, yes.
So, it seems like next month we'll have, um, a fair amount of needed, more needed information, I think. Right, there's, is there a huge rush for them tonight or just wait?
Good approach Laura Peddix, just to indicate that we thought, as that we expect that there will be costs, more, perhaps more costs associated with. Uh, the, with the purchase than we might have anticipated.
Right, but without giving her a figure, yeah.
Yeah, with that, and that we might want a reduction, um, in the cost price. To, to at least partially cover those costs, so, some, you know, see if she's willing to accept something that, that is, you know, less than. The appraisal value that we have.
And I, you know, I've been basically saying that to her each time I've updated her on what we're doing, that. You know, it is unlikely that the town would want to offer the appraisal price, because we know that there are other costs involved.
Yeah, right.
And we're doing all the legwork. I mean, she is a property owner, could have hired an attorney, gone through the title search, you know, fought with the town of Ashford. About, you know, access, or even fought with the town of Wellington, because, um, Burma Road was never officially discontinued. Um, according to Mark Palmer, we're not even sure it was an official road. Um, you know, so, you know, I mean, this, this is what happens when there's all these gray areas, um. But basically, as a property owner, she should have access. You can't land lock that property. So she would have to fight with the town of Ashford or fight with the town of Wellington to get access. Doesn't mean the town would have to. Um, improve the road, but we would have to give her a right of way through the road into the uh, camp through Burma Road, which would mean. She could update the road as needed, but do we really want that to happen within the park boundaries, you know, and then it's open to whoever wants to go up that road, so.
Go ride your dirt bikes up there.
Right. I mean, another reason for securing that property is to make sure it's never developed, so we don't have to deal with people accessing it through the park. You know, yeah, a road, so. All right, well, you know, how do people feel then? And Patty's suggesting that we wait until August, so we have better figures, and then we can agree upon. Um, a starting point for negotiating a price at least.
I, I, I think we have to have. A firm figure, what our costs are going to. And then have a serious conversation with her about what our costs are going to be. Other, otherwise, there's too much of a gray area. It turns into a wishy-washy situation.
Okay, so.
It's taken us to this point, how long?
Couple of years.
Yeah.
And it was a long time before that, that they really wanted to sell it, because they hadn't, they hadn't used the property in a long time. I think, I think particularly after he's took up flying as a hobby and, and they, they got away from using the property then, so.
And, 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 you know, she's, her husband died, she moved to, you know, Maryland to be closer to her family, so. Um, a- and I believe she still works. I don't think she's desperate to sell it for the money. Um, I think at this point, she would really like to see it be, become part of the park and, uh, be a tribute to her husband and her, you know. Time there.
Yeah, his, his parents are very local, the deceased.
Okay, yeah. So. All right, so we'll wait till August. I'll have, hopefully have some figures from.
It was her father that was involved. Was it her father that brought it, that you talked?
Yeah, but I don't know that that means he's local, Carol.
I think, I think he was, I don't know.
He's not. Her father is not.
Oh, okay.
And he's actually passed away.
Oh, wow. It was only a couple of years ago, he reached out to Peter after Mrs. Peddix's husband died. Yeah. Okay, so we'll wait till August. We'll have some firmer figures, and then we'll come up with, um, a starting pro- point. Um, and we can start working with Mrs. Peddix, and if, um, she's agreeable to a price. Um, then we can go before Board of Finance, kind of as a package, this is what we anticipate the cost would be. And then they can make some decisions about whether or not they wanna take it out of the reserve, whether they wanted to go through the open space fund. Um, and then we can walk it through from there, and maybe by the end of this year, we'll be able to kinda, you know.
Go swimming. And go fishing.
Well, I think, I think, I've, I've gotta double check with, with Donna, but I think she said that the, the, this year, we've, we're gonna be getting twenty five thousand. Uh, it'd be put into the open space fund as part of CIP, uh, and then the, the next four years will be thirty each, I believe that's what. How, what's happened. I haven't actually seen the, uh, the whole open space, uh, CIP plan. So, but there should be some money coming in this year.
Okay, and maybe when you have a chance, Carol, once, um, you think that that. Money has been transferred over, um, we can just get a figure, so we go before.
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk to Donna.
Okay, great.
Donna, I, we see Donna a lot, poor Donna, is treasurer of the St. Congregational Church also, so Davis, and Davis, Davis filling in, we were, we, we, um. Lost our, our office administrator, so now my husband has assistant treasurer, is reviewing all the bills, and so he's having a lot of contact with Donna. We see, we talk with Donna, uh, email frequently, see her fairly often, so.
Okay, thanks for doing that. Okay, thanks for doing that. Um. It, one other thing that came up with all of this when we talked to Austin Harmon from Hall and he walked their property with us, he was asking about. You know, what is our forest management plan? Does the commission, the town have any interest in maybe um, you know, looking into having any of. The property harvested, uh, not the Peddix property, but the um Fenton Ruby Park. And when I looked at the forest management plan, one of the suggestions that Conwood had made is consider a harvest where the Ruby Trail is. Which is about seventy-four acres, that stand is about seventy-four acres. Um, and they wanted to do like a thinning with maybe some um. Opening, some small quarter acre opening, so. Um. That was another thing that Austin asked if we would like to have him. You know, do kind of a walkthrough, give us an idea of what Hall might consider paying to do a harvest there. That is, are we interested in that or? Just getting, it doesn't mean there's a commitment, it would just mean that we would allow him to do some kind of a. Timber cruise, I guess, and.
Give us that, give us an estimate and that that would be the same kinda thing where they would um. They would get. We put, we might not uh pre-realize much of a of a. Benefit from it, economic benefit from it, depending on what's available in that section. But they should be able to that, to access that from. The uh, the un, the open part of Burma Road.
Right, they would just go up that section of Burma Road, they would, you know, go up the same way that we did the harvest on the. Stand eight, which is on the right hand sand, right hand side of Burma. Um, they would go up that road and use that, yeah. Do we wanna, you know. Ask him to do kind of an estimate and get back to us, or how do you guys feel about that?
I I think we should, an awful lot of those big trees in the last number of years, the tops are starting to twist out of them. And, you know, it's just an awful lot of trash. Um. You know, I I I don't wanna, you know, I I think a selective cut would be good. I mean, it's, how long since that area's been uh harvested and. Whole idea of the park is. To manage it. I mean.
We paid for that, we paid for a plan, it probably, probably makes sense to try and adhere to it and. And actually, we we have, we've got a lot of things that have been, that are undone on other properties as well. Um, we've had, you know, cause we have, we have some advice on things that ought should should have been happening on on Knowlton and Talmage as well. Yeah.
Yeah, Jackie.
Have you shared the management plan with Austin for the?
I, I did, I sent him a copy, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I think it wouldn't hurt to have him do a walkthrough.
Okay. All right, then I'll let him know that, you know, we're open to that um idea, when there's no commitment, but, you know, we would like to see what. What some kind of estimate would be for what they would propose to do and what they'd estimate. Um, financially, what the town might be able to get from that harvest. And, you know, we're doing this also for forest health, it's not. Uh, necessarily to reap a lot of money, cause we probably won't.
The last time around, yeah, but and and that, but that the primary goal is management.
It's stewardship, we're stewarding it. We're in charge of it, we have to keep, we have to keep up with it.
Yeah, and we, we've paid for the plans and um I think we, we should. Be responsible in following through on on some of the major recommendations, particularly areas where we think there might be problems.
And does anybody, the other. Question I have with this is, you know, in the past, we've used an independent forester rather than a forester who works for a company. That basically will end up buying the wood. They won't do, you know, they contract out for the logging, but they they basically do this because they end up buying some of the wood, so. Um. It it may not be as. What's the word, as independent. Well. You know, as independent an assessment of what wood to take out as somebody who's independent forester. I mean, Jackie, I'm, I'm just gonna kinda bounce that off of you, what are your thoughts on that?
Um, I would say that that Hall tends to have a pretty good reputation as foresters, um, as well as a sawmill. So I wouldn't be. You know, it certainly. We, we have worked with independent foresters in the past and. That might be an option, but. Um, a lot of those folks are usually pretty busy and it seems like. Hall is, you know, willing to give us an estimate, so. Maybe see, see how that goes.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, concerns, thoughts?
No, I think we should give Hall a a try. Uh, after that last harvest, I, I just thought there was a little bit too much big wood still on the ground. Uh, I just. I don't know, I'm not an expert, but I've walked through woods that have been logged before and I just. Lot left that should have been taken.
Well, I think a lot of that is left um on purpose for for wildlife habitat, so probably the park in particular, they were. Trying to not make it look super clean, which may be more aesthetically pleasing, but um leave more uh coarse wood degree. For wildlife.
And those logs that were.
Sorry, what, I, you broke up a bit.
Now, I I'm no expert, but it seemed like a lot of those logs, and they were pretty great, were just left on the ground. Uh, I mean, they could have, those things could have been spot up for railroad ties. Of six.
Sorry, it's breaking up a little bit still for me.
It is, yeah.
Companies are. Pretty aware of what the markets are currently for the wood and they. If it pays its way out of the woods, then then they will take it and if it doesn't. Then, then they will be more likely to leave it. Um, sometimes the markets just aren't there for the like railroad ties or. Or um pulp or firewood, um, and they really don't pay their way out of the woods. At that time, but but it can change, you know. In a couple of months or a couple of years. Depending on the markets.
Yeah, I hear you.
And um, the other thing with that timber harvest, I, I don't know if you guys remember is, it was originally, the timber was marked. By a different forester and then that forester was no longer available. And we had, we hired Eric from um uh Wilicky. I'm trying to think of the other part of that. Peruki and Valicky. So when Eric came in, he kinda was a little concerned that it hadn't been marked. Heavy enough um to regenerate oak. But he just stayed with the plan and um. So, you know, if you go in there now, the regeneration is not all that great, I mean, some of that's because we have a lot of deer. And they're gonna be eating anything that comes up, um. But um, you know, that was the other thing I asked. Um, Austin was if he was gonna be able to do, if if we agreed, he would do a field walk. If he wanted to look at the other stand that had been harvested, cause we harvested, I think eighteen acres of the thirty-three acres. To look at that side and to see if there's anything else that maybe could be done there to improve regeneration. So he said he'd be willing to do that as well. Okay.
Good idea to get, to get a quote.
Yeah, can't hurt. Um, moving on to historic parcel on Jared Sparks Road, um, last time we spoke. Uh, I had contacted the property owner after we sent the letter, I had called her by telephone. And um, she said that she hadn't really followed up with her family yet, but did have some interest in seeing it conserved. I have not heard back from her. And I figured, you know, give her a couple more months, if we don't hear back, I'll try to give her another call. See if um, you know, she's moving on it with her family at all. Meanwhile, Mark Palmer, our town historian, has been doing some preliminary title search of that parcel as well as the town's adjacent. Property, um. Just to kinda be in a position to understand back, understand better historically. How those parcels might have been related because the pals were concerned that part of the town's property. Was, you know, something that they actually owned and the more Mark does the research on this, um, you know. It's pretty clear that um. The pals never owned any part of the town's property. Um, the town's property seemed to be have to have been taken in a tax, cause the taxes weren't paid. Um, Mark's trying to match up. Um, how this all happened and who the previous landowners were because. Some of the records seem to be missing, um, but he's doing a good job of trying to go back and, you know. Uh, historically document what happened, so he's got all that information and he he's providing it to me. And as, when he finishes the research, I'll provide it to you, so.
It's interesting reading.
And it never hurts to do a lot of the groundwork because it should reduce the number of hours of legal fees we might have to to deal with.
Yeah, definitely. Uh, Wellington Wire, um, Laura had provided the last um. Article on the Park Day and the Evasives and Marilyn also provided the bear awareness article. And uh, they were able to put both of them in the Wellington Wire. Which was great, uh, very timely with the bear article, Marilyn.
Yeah, you can thank Dave, Dave was the one who reminded me, you know, there's all those pictures on Facebook in Wellington of bears. It's time to get people, you know.
Where, where exactly are these bears in Wellington, Maryland?
They're everywhere, they seem to be up mostly up. Uh, like where, um, I don't know the name of the. Marit Circle seems to have a lot of bears. There, and there's, it's, there's bobcats too, it's not just bears, there's all kinds of critters. There's uh coyotes, there's. It's just amazing, you just have to, you have to watch Facebook, it's just shocking how many, how many uh. We have a lot of bears and wildlife in our property, which is great.
That, that, there's a one section uh near the Stafford line, uh butts the state forest, so it's not surprising that we have.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Um, so the next article's due at the end of September. Um, Marilyn, you, I think you had said you're, you're willing to continue to do them, or do you wanna break or?
No, I could, uh, is, Dave helps me come up with topics, it's hard to come up with topics, you know, you have to really. Think hard of what people might wanna read, so, so far, so good.
Okay, well, you know, the one, the end of September would be pertaining to things uh for October, November, December.
Right.
You know, if we have any events coming up, we can thread it through there, what's that, Carol?
Nothing, I'm just waving off my husband, something about the whether or not to turn the air conditioner on or off, I don't know.
I thought, I thought a mosquito was bugging you. Okay, so Marilyn, thank you for uh volunteering to do that. Um, communications, uh, so I got some information that CROG, which is the Capital Region Council of Governments. Has uh finished doing the draft of their two thousand twenty-four Plan of Conservation and Development, so. They're the regional. Um, they look at the regional focus for Plan of Conservation and Development, that would include all of the towns. Um, in, under the Capital Region and we're included in that, so they have a draft available for public comment. So I will do is, I will send you a link to uh that document, so if you would like to take a look at it. When we get together in August, if you have some thoughts about any. Comments you would like the commission to make, that we can make together, I can write those up and send them. In for um September, because they're looking for their comments to be um submitted by September tenth. Send you a link. To that. And review of current open space and natural resource maps, um, I'd like to suggest we just continue to table that right now, it's just on the radar screen and. Maybe in the um early part of winter, we can start working on that. Uh, new business, I don't really have anything under new business, does anybody have any suggestions? Um, or things they wanted to bring up under new business? Um, next meeting is August twenty-first. Um, I'd like to. Yeah, okay, so Carol, motion adjourned, second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Bob, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody wanna stand by yourself?
Just one, one last comment, that the, the Turk Cap willies are blossoming down along the Centon River. Both uh orange and yellow.
River, Bob?
Uh, by the fields, if you walk in the hayfields, you'll see them.
Oh, great, they're beautiful.
I was surprised to see both the orange and the yellow. More yellow than orange.
Bob, if you have a chance, can you send out, you had sent me um some pictures, can you send them out to everybody?
Uh, I think I have everybody's email, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right, well, I hope you all have a good month and um look forward to seeing you.
Thank you.
There you are.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.
Bye-bye.